Order, and to return to unfinished business, we have one item left over from the morning calendar and several items left over from the afternoon calendar yesterday. Item 679, I think it's the first.
679, authorize a grant to Central City Concern in an amount not to exceed $1,716,410 for the provision of treatment readiness services, transitional housing, and follow-up retention support services to chemically-dependent homeless adult chronic arrestees.
So, I know there were questions about this. Chance to get informed, folks here, if you have further questions.
We're all set, Mayor.
All set, so thank you for being here. As resources, I think we're ready to proceed then. Roll call vote, please, on 679.
Fish?
Mayor, thank you for the one-day set over. I've had a chance to have my questions addressed, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz? This is a really important program which goes beyond the Police Bureau and is something that the three of us who were here during the previous administration prioritized in very difficult budget times. So, I think Commissioner Fish and my concerns voiced yesterday are evidence that we continue to be highly invested in this program. I do have continued concerns about the mix of sober and entry-level care that's being offered under this contract, and so I would like to have some continued discussion, particularly when this contract comes back for reassignment next year. There are, I think that the service coordination team approach is hugely important in that we need to continue to have all five of us involved in making sure that it goes in the direction that we want it to do so. In the meantime, aye.
Hales?
I appreciate the chance to have the discussion. Just want to say, Ed, I'm glad you're here. You're a great partner, and we depend on great partners for these programs to work. I think what we need to be doing in a number of areas, homelessness, mental health, youth at risk, is find partnerships that work and do more, you know, take them to scale. So, I'm very interested not only in maintaining the service coordination team but expanding it because it works. So, I want to hear from the Bureau about that, from the management of the team, from our partners. You know, the definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result. So, if we're doing things that are different and working well, again, in any of these intergovernmental issues that are also dealing with long-term intractable problems like drug addiction and homelessness and youth at risk, to name three, let's, again, seize on things that are working and do more of them. So, I'm very interested not just in hearing back from you about how the program's working and how our contractors are performing, but what we could do more of with more resources. I expect that the city is going to have the ability to invest more in things that we need to invest in, whether it's capital improvements or programs that work. So, hopefully, that's a clear signal to you that this is something that everyone on the council is very focused on. Finally, I've had a chance, I know, I believe you have, Commissioner Fritz, maybe you have as well, Nick and Dan, but Steve, I don't think you have yet. If you haven't had a chance to go to a service coordination team graduation, oh yeah, you have, it's amazing, and I encourage all of us to do that, so please make, let us know. Lieutenant Hager and Rachel, the next one that comes up, I'm certainly interested in attending because it really helps us see, again, the people that these programs serve and how they work. So, thank you all for great work. Aye.
May I make one more comment after the vote? I apologize for going over the end. And that, I was reminded, as I was having discussions, that we're talking about people in a program. So, the discussion at council yesterday was about the economics and the Medicaid and such. When we do a transition from one provider to another, we're talking about a therapist being a different therapist for somebody who's in the program. And so, I think it's really, it was a good reminder to me, because I've become a policymaker now, and I think in policy terms, that we also all need to be thinking about the individual people who are part of the program and how are we going to structure programs that work for those particular people as well as the long-term health of the program. So, I appreciate that Central City Concern is obviously very mindful about that. You have skilled therapists who will help today's cohort make the transition to a different provider, but we all know how difficult it is when a beloved physician or therapist or dentist terminates their practice, and so I just wanted to remind us all of that.
Yes, good point. Thank you all very much. Okay, let's move on to the regular agenda items that were postponed, starting with 690.
Revised homeownership and home repair financial assistance guidelines for the Portland Housing Bureau.
Mr. Saltzman?
Thank you, Mayor. These proposed revisions are for the Housing Bureau's Home Ownership and Home Repair Program Guidelines, and they reflect the need for greater flexibility for homeownership subsidies in order to successfully achieve program outcomes in the current real estate market, particularly in north and northeast Portland. Loan terms for homeownership subsidies are being modified to reflect the significant levels of assistance required to create homeownership opportunities for low-income families in the current market. The affordability period has been extended from 15 to 30 years, and provisions for loan forgiveness of homeownership assistance loans have been removed.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone wants to speak on this item? If not, roll call and resolution.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
I appreciate the explanation that just came. I request that whenever we have changes, if we could please get strikeout and underlined versions routinely, because it's very difficult when you're just presented with new guidelines to know what's different from the previous ones. So, with Commissioner Saltzman's explanation, I'm happy to vote aye.
Hales?
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'm going to be interested in seeing what more we can do, not just with the funds that you and I have earmarked in the interstate urban rural area, but elsewhere, for trying to give people more homeownership opportunities. As the, we concentrate a lot in affordable housing on affordable rental housing, but I think the ability of people to buy homes in the city is another affordability issue that we want to focus on more, so thanks for attending to that as well. Aye.
Okay, 691.
Authorize consortium agreement with City of Gresham and Multnomah County to participate in the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program to receive affordable housing funds.
Mr. Saltzman?
Thank you, Mayor. Portland, I'm sorry, funding received by the Portland Home Consortium is allocated to three individual jurisdictions based on their share of poverty. Portland's share of poverty and the home resources is approximately 79 percent of the funding received. For fiscal '15-'16, the consortium received almost $3 million, and Portland's share was $2.2 million. And the other jurisdictions are City of Gresham and Multnomah County.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone want to speak on this ordinance? Then a roll call vote, please. It's an emergency ordinance.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. 692.
Amend the tax increment financing set-aside for affordable housing policy to extend the deadline for Portland Housing Bureau to conduct a thorough review of the policy from June 30, 2015, to September 30, 2015.
Mr. Saltzman?
Thank you, Mayor. The TIF set-aside policy is supposed to be reviewed every five years, and we're simply asking, there's been a lot of activity recently around URA updates and set-aside policy, and we feel that we could give you a better report if we had until September 30 of this year rather than 10 days ago.
Commissioner, I'm going to support this with just one caveat. I would hope on this body that we are not requiring any member of council to bring an ordinance to get an extension of this limited duration. And I would hope that we could do this informally, simply through disclosure, rather than have to put your Bureau through the task of filing an ordinance on something as ministerial as this. And you have every reason to ask for, and you have every claim on a very brief additional amount of time to prepare this report. I would encourage us to do these kinds of things informally without the necessity of an ordinance.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any other comments? Anyone want to speak on this item? Then it comes back for second reading next week. 693.
Authorize 20 sub-recipient contracts totaling $16,777,246 for services in support of ending homelessness and providing affordable housing.
Mr. Saltzman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This will provide over $16 million of a broad continuum of assistance and services for low-income homeowners, renters, homeless individuals and families, and those at risk at homelessness. This master ordinance creates efficiencies for staff and council by consolidating the multiple contract ordinances into a single ordinance for council. The strategy has been employed successfully by the Bureau for the past several years. We urge adoption.
Questions?
I just want to, oh, just a comment, Mayor. I know we're not going to vote on this till next week, but the Exhibit A that's attached is an honor roll of mission-driven nonprofits that are core partners of the city in advancing our goals towards reducing and ultimately ending homelessness. And we are talking about a mix of funds, including general fund, federal funds, and then funds that are competitive funds. And if anyone wants to sort of see the roadmap of how this community, on an annual basis, attempts to tackle this enormous challenge of homelessness, Exhibit A is about as good a document as I've seen that lays out all of our great partners who are working on the front lines of making a difference.
Questions?
Thanks, Mayor. I greatly appreciate the consolidative approach. How does a nonprofit apply to have some of this funding? If next year, when we get to this point, there is another omnibus ordinance, how would a new nonprofit apply to become a partner with the Housing Bureau?
I believe it's all competitive, but I can double-check on that and get back to you. Did we put out a solicitation?
Yeah, if you, if you would, the one that's missing here for me is Right to Dream Two, and I know that they're going to be entering to provide a different kind of service from some of the others, but you've also got some terrific partnerships, for instance, with the Community Alliance of Tenants. They're not direct providers of, so, yeah, I'd appreciate knowing their process.
Okay. I'll check and get back to you.
Anyone want to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one person signed up. Barry Joe Stoll.
Come on up, Mr. Stoll.
Thanks. I'll share with you what I shared with the County Board of Commissioners earlier today. I'm wearing my hat because I have a neuropathic pain condition, and light is kind of toxic at points, so it's just annoying. So, the reason I took it off is because I respect you. I took it off, rather. I could very well be the poster child of the City of Portland for a lot of things that are wrong, and I'm going to talk about how, as a person with a disability, it's a spinal cord injury. That's like, that's like saying that flaming heap at the bottom of the cliff is a car that had a brake problem. I came home from work and was locked out of my apartment. My landlord destroyed $20,000 worth of my property in 2006. You've all heard this, and I know you've all done absolutely nothing about it. So, I don't think we need to have any more discussion. I went through a horrible, horrible experience that was actually criminal, and I can tell you right now that the reason I survived, because I'm highly educated. I'm in the top 5 percent in IQ tests, the way we give them in this society, which doesn't measure my musical talent that I have. And I come from a working-class background and people that work really hard. My grandfather survived a coal mining accident, and he still ended a 50-year career as a coal miner while he had all of his other jobs. So, what I'm saying is, down the street, Mr. Bradley, working for Mr. Shrunk, the Deputy District Attorney, or the District Attorney at the time, Mr. Bradley said that they do not enforce perjury and landlord-tenant actions. And I happened to be in a lawyer's office when one lawyer said to the other, "I can't believe the landlords can get away with saying anything and the court accepts it, and if the tenant does one thing, it's any, a hint of some kind of impropriety, the way they serve the document, the court fines with the landlord." Okay, so the problem we have here isn't a housing problem, it's a social justice problem. And I went through transition projects. They approved my housing plan. They kicked me out. I tested positive for THC. It was actually Marinol, a Drenabinol. It's a federal-approved drug that my neurologist gave me. And then they said my housing plan didn't work anymore, and I filed a grievance, and that grievance was never processed. And one of the persons that got a copy of that was Doreen Binder, who we named the men's shelter in the Bud Clark Commons after. So, I'm going to tell you all right now, I do know about how heat rises and cold sinks because it's a function of gravity, and I do know how people become perpetually chronically homeless in this city. I'm one of them. I'm housed with a HUD grant as a person with a disability that meets the definition of chronically homelessness. I'm telling you, I became chronically homeless and endured chronic homelessness in this city because the nonprofit Affordable Housing Landlord no doubt has 4066 Northeast Grant vacant right now. He's still partnering with them. You're still partnering with them, okay? Why are we keeping affordable housing vacant and awarding these types of things? We have to look upstream, see who's throwing the people in the river, and not just deal with the angry person like myself that comes out wet.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'm available, Mayor. I would like you to consult with me on this. I want this to be a two-way street and not me endlessly saying the same thing. Take action, you need answers? I have quite a few. You should start asking me some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, then it's a non-emergency ordinance, comes back on second reading next week. 694.
Confirm the Portland Streetcar and Portland Aerial Tram participation in the Orange Line Grand Opening Celebration on September 12, 2015.
Mr. Novick?
Colleagues, this is a joyous occasion. We are going to confirm that we will be participating in the numerous festivities on September 12, which, alas, will not include my suggestion that Neil McFarlane wear a cowboy hat and lasso people out of single occupancy vehicles and drag them out of the Orange Line without being tied in with the Pendleton Roundup. But all sorts of other cool things will happen. Catherine?
Good afternoon. Thank you. With me is Ann Becklin, the Director of Community Affairs of TRIMET, to tell you more about the September 12 celebration for the opening of the Orange Line, the opening of the Telecom Crossing Bridge, which of course means that Streetcar can also close the loop and circumnavigate the central city. We're very excited to participate in the celebration.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm very happy to be here to talk about, give you just a taste of what we're doing for the MAX Orange Line opening. Neil showed me a very beautiful tie he received from you yesterday.
I made sure he was properly coiffed.
He's very happy about that. We are 78 days today.
He may be happy with it, but the test will be whether he actually wears it.
Oh, you will see that on him quite a bit this summer, I predict. We're 78 days out from our MAX line grand opening on September 12. And as some of you may know, we kicked off the Catch the Orange campaign on May 15 with a spectacular first ride out to Park Avenue in Clackamas. About 500 people attended with us. We have a very big event, gamut of events. We've got 27 events over five months leading up to that opening day. We've got talks and walks. We've got lectures on sustainability and bridge building. We have preview rides and safety rides, and of course, our major public celebrations. I want to say that our slate of events has been entirely funded by the generosity of local corporate sponsors and organizations. We're very grateful for that. And, but why are we doing so much? We realize that this is not just the celebration in our community of the latest great investment and partnership that we've demonstrated among our partners, but it's also one of the greatest teachable moments we've had in our community for having people experience what an investment like this can bring, how the advances in sustainability, redevelopment, education, ability to leverage partnerships has all culminated in the opening of the MAX Orange Line. So, we're out to make a point however we can reach people. We've had, we've been thrilled with the response to date. We've toured over 2,000 schoolchildren, took school safety rides as part of our program in May and early June. They loved being on the bridge. What better way to get them to be transit supporters and users than to train them early? We've also, the Streetcar and MAX Orange Line are offering six preview rides a week. We expect to tour thousands of people on the both lines between now and August, early August. Currently, we're experiencing packed cars and cheers when we get to the ends of the line. Last week, over 200 people turned out for a Transit on Tap where we had a talk about the kind of archaeological finds we discovered underneath MAX construction. It's really interesting how transit and beer go together for the best kind of night meeting, and you can really connect with people in those kind of forums. There is our Catch the Orange website that is on your screen right now. If you scroll down, it shows the entire list of our events going through opening day. I'd like to point out just a few of them for, that you may be interested. On July 20, we're going to host Congressman Earl Blumenhour for Transit on Tap at the new Hasselo and Eighth Development, which is served by both Streetcar and MAX. Our big public events kickoff with the 20th anniversary of Bridge Pedal on August 9. We'll do Bridge Pedal in the morning. They're expecting to max out their attendance at 20,000 that day. Be the first opportunity for the public to ride over the Telecom Crossing. And in the afternoon, the City of Portland is partnering with TRIMET and Providence to host an open day on the bridge so that people get to experience it even if they didn't pay to ride on Bridge Pedal. We're also doing fireworks spectacular that will be blown off of both sides of the bridge on Saturday night, August 22. We expect thousands of people to show up for that. Then on September 10, as we demonstrated earlier this week, we're calling the First Light. We'll light the aesthetic lighting on the bridge permanently at that time. We have a 9/11 celebration planned for Friday night, a memorial and ceremony that will happen in our town of Milwaukee along the alignment. And then on September 12, we have a very grand opening day planned. We're, we've, our partners in the celebration, the Grand Ron Tribe, are going to escort the first MAX train over the Telecom Crossing as we come up to the ceremony. So, we've got a very big palette of events. We know, and we're also, this is the first time since 1998 that we've made MAX, all MAX and bus free on that day. We're expecting over 80,000 people to come celebrate with us. With the inclusion of Streetcar and the tram, we know that it is going to be a party around the entire Central Business District and all the way out, all of our lines. And so, we're very grateful for the partnership that you've demonstrated, both on the project and in this momentous community celebration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions?
Very honored. Catherine? Just want to observe that last weekend, my daughter and I took a long bike ride, and we ended up following the Orange Line from someplace in Brooklyn in, and then we went to where the Orange Line bisects the Oregon Rail Heritage Museum. And the thing that struck us is how great the bike infrastructure is integrated into the, all the work that's been done along the Orange Line. And it's, it's pretty neat.
It's pretty amazing. We tagged the total at $65 million worth of bike and pedestrian improvements along the Orange Line because of the participation and the way we were able to leverage all of the partners' investment in it.
Yeah, that's our new favorite route from our neighborhood to the Central East Side because it's such a straight shot and a nice run. Can you tell us a little bit about the community involvement in the 12th? Are we having high school bands that stops? Are we using, you know?
Well, per your suggestion, both the Symphony and the Royal Rosarians will be participating in the opening ceremony.
Good.
And we have major stages at Lincoln, which is the big line. They'll be programmed all day. Down by the bridge, we expect very heavy crowds. The Grand Ron is going to set up a Native American Village in the area adjacent to the bridge. OHSU is sponsoring a station and opening their new Collaborative Life Sciences Building to the public. Once you cross the bridge, OMSI and Opera and all classical and the Oregon rail history, Oregon Historical Rail Facility are going to have a major events there. Our station at Clinton is also going to be really fun, like the gateway to that neighborhood there, that newly revitalized neighborhood. Then you follow on out, you go along, but people will have an opportunity to visit some of our facilities along 17th Avenue. Then the City of Milwaukee and Clackamas County are sponsoring events at their respective stations. It's going to be a very big day. And we'll have all of that on our, on our site. Also, Pamplin Media is going to publish an insert that will provide a guide for everyone that plans to come and talk about all the events that are happening that day.
Maybe, maybe even the city's golf course in Eastmoreland could.
They're, we're giving away orange teas at the Bybee Station.
Good. I think it's probably the only municipal golf course in the country where you can walk off the light rail train and play golf. So, they ought to make the most of that with travel Portland in the future.
Right.
Great work. Other questions?
I just wanted to say that the first ride was remarkable in many ways, but perhaps the most was that the governor, who was instrumental in getting funding for the Orange Line when she was in the legislature, was there, and she had to have been the happiest governor in America.
That was a real boost.
Good work. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this resolution? If not, then roll call, please.
Fish?
Look forward to joining you.
Thank you. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
This is going to be great. Aye.
Fritz? I was honored to represent the city at the joining together of the two sides of the Telecom Crossing, so I'm also looking forward to this event. Have to say, I'm very pleased to see that it's scheduled on a day that the Oregon Ducks are away, so I may actually wear orange, although I don't usually during football season. Aye.
Hales?
Thanks very much. It's going to be fun. Aye. Well done. Okay, 695.
Amend contract with TRIMET related to the operations and maintenance of the Portland Streetcar system and increase funding to $7,271,090.
Mr. Novick?
More cause for celebration. TRIMET's contributing more money towards the operation of the Streetcar.
Right. This amendment is our annual amendment whereby TRIMET and the City of Portland exhibit their agreement on the funding for the upcoming fiscal year. So, for fiscal year '15-'16, the amount of TRIMET funding going to Portland Streetcar operations will be more than half. It'll be $7.2 million.
Great. That's great. Questions? Anyone want to speak on this ordinance? Then a roll call vote, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
I'm a long way. Aye. 696.
Amend contract with Portland Streetcar, Inc. for Portland Streetcar Operations Assistance.
Mr. Novick?
Colleagues, this spring, PBOT worked with procurement on a competitive solicitation for Streetcar Operations Assistance Services. In other words, the kind of services that have historically been provided by Portland Streetcar, Inc. But we decided to open that up to a competitive process. Evaluations have been completed, and as of last Friday, June 19, the seven-day protest period ended. However, the existing contract expires on June 30, and the purpose of this ordinance is to provide uninterrupted services while we complete contract negotiations with Portland Streetcar, Inc. Do I have that right, Catherine?
You do. Thank you.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. Questions for Catherine? Anyone want to speak on this item? Roll call vote, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. And 697.
Vacate a portion of an unnamed street north of North Schmear Road, subject to certain conditions and reservations.
Second reading, roll call.
Fish?
I hope someday that someone puts a bagel joint at North Schmear Road. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
And I hope that it'll also have egg creams. Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. 698.
Authorize a contract with Eco Northwest to fund an economic impact study of the Delta Park Recreation Complex for an amount not to exceed $48,000.
Mr. Fritz?
Thank you, Mayor. Adoption of this ordinance will fund a study to conduct an economic survey of the Delta Park Recreation Complex, which is East Delta Park, the Portland International Raceway, and Heron Lakes Golf Course. We've invested heavily in these regional facilities over the year, and the study will help us understand how to help us understand how to enhance the performance of these facilities through integrated investments and targeted investments. In addition, it may help us, hopefully, to figure out how to use, recover lost dollars in the forms of spillover spending that has seeped across the Washington-Oregon border into Clark County and to support more jobs in North Portland. Eco Northwest is a leading company in this area of research. They have worked as a vendor for the City of Portland many times in the past. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Trang Lam, who has the almost impossible, but she's doing it very well, task of filling Todd Lott's garden shoes. Welcome, Trang.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Trang Lam. I'm the new Property and Business Development Manager at Portland Parks and Recreation. I have with me Frank James, the property management specialist here, who will be managing the contract for us. I'm here today to request approval of a contract to fund economic impact study of the Delta Park Recreational Complex for an amount not to exceed $48,000. The three facilities that Commissioner Fritz mentioned total over 700 acres of parks asset, so it's important for us to take a look at these assets and see how we can find new opportunities. So now I'm going to turn it over to Frank to tell you a little bit more about the contract and the study that we're doing.
Sure. Thank you. The contract fee actually is a pretty small investment to make considering everything else that we've put into those facilities, and it's going to be designed to go ahead and bring the facilities to a level that hopefully we'll be that much more pleased with. As you probably know, Eco Northwest is one of the best vendors to do this kind of work as they've actually had previous experience with at least PIR in the past. They've done a couple of studies of PIR back in, I believe it was 2006 and 2007. So, you know, they have the kind of background that will allow them to go ahead and to be that much more efficient with the kind of work that they're going to be doing with this contract. There's a great potential to substantially enhance the performance of the facilities as we try to leverage their unique uses with the kind of targeted investments that can emerge from the kind of data that is going to be provided by the study. And the study will also assist in determining how potential enhancements at the three facilities may increase visitor counts, better meet the needs of local residents, and ultimately support more jobs in North Portland. Now, the Portland Development Commission conducted a competitive solicitation process, and they awarded flexible services contracts to several local vendors to perform studies. Parks believes that PDC's procurement process meets the intent of the Portland City Code of the Professional, Technical, and Expert Manual by maximizing competition and providing opportunities to local professionals. Excuse me, one second, please. That's the worst thing that could happen.
Worst thing that could happen.
There's so much worse in here, believe it. I have to apologize for that.
Worst thing to happen in your day to day.
I meant to shut it off before I took my seat, but neglected to do so. So getting back to my point, PDC's process, we believe, meets the intent of the Portland City Code of 5.68.015 of the PTE manual by maximizing competition and providing opportunities to local professional, technical, and expert service providers. And consequently, it should facilitate the awarding of this contract. So we'd hope that you'd agree with what we've had to say about this matter and authorize it.
So this, I have some questions to.
Sure.
Obviously supportive of this kind of inquiry, but just want to think out loud a little bit. So we're looking at both the sort of enterprise functions, i.e. the golf course and the PIR, which is, maybe the PIR is a little bit of a hybrid, and the more traditional community-serving functions of the soccer fields and the, and the softball complex and so on, right? We're looking at all of those in an economic study.
Yes.
And, and so obviously, there are, there are different cost recovery objectives for each of those. You know, this is a familiar topic because we, in effect, have rolled back the clock on our cost recovery objectives on our community centers in part with the action that the City Council took in this budget to make recreation more free and available for teenagers and, and community centers across the city. So, you know, there are policy questions attendant to the analysis, which maybe the analysis is intended to inform, but I'm just curious about how you see those playing out. That, in other words, we may want to make less money on the softball complex so it can be more used by more teams. How do we, how do we finesse those issues, or how does this study intersect with that set of policy decisions that the five of us need to weigh?
So I think, you know, the study will help us figure out what the opportunities might be if there are other uses out there that can actually be complementary to what's currently with the softball fields and the soccer fields and things like that for the community purpose. From a cost recovery perspective, we'll also need to take a look at how those same assets can actually be used for tournaments and things like that so we can bring some revenues in to support the community efforts. So there's, there's a balance between those two elements, and we'll be taking a look at those policies and how we can balance those two to provide those community amenities while figuring out how do we bring in some revenues to support that.
I know we have a Parks Board, and they may have, you may be reviewing this work with them as you proceed. But we also have a number of user groups there, whether it's the Portland Softball Association or the, the car nuts, I mean, race car aficionados that love the PIR and golfers, and we have a golf advisory committee and so on.
Right, right.
Are you going to involve some of those user groups, at least in reviewing what you're finding?
We definitely will. I think this is the first step to understanding what the opportunities are. As we use this study, we'll take a look at what might be able to be implemented. So we'll take, we'll use this study to talk to those user groups and say, here's the variety of, you know, opportunities that we see. Let's talk about what the priorities are out here.
So following up on the Mayor's questions, because this is a very familiar conversation, and I'm just delighted, Commissioner Fritz, you're launching this. And I'm sure this is going to be part of the analysis, but let me just throw out some ideas that I hope will come back to us. The first is, what are some of the public-private opportunities to complete the turfing of all the fields at Delta Park? And I have to tell you, driving by Delta Park the other day and seeing four fields with turf and lights made my heart sing because, in addition to all the obvious benefits, it, it opens the door to 24/7, 12 months a year use. And one of the problems with Delta Park was we, we, we lost all those hours in the evenings and in the rainy season. So that's, it's a huge win for recreational sports. So that's one. How could we leverage the other fields? Number two, how could we capitalize on the parking at PIR when it's not, when it's not in use for race events? Number three, how might we better create connectivity between those three venues and the MAX stop? Because one of the challenges, it's great there's a MAX stop there now that I-5 has become a parking lot at, when you want, when you need to get there in the afternoon, but it's a little hard to get from there to the, to the venue. So how might we facilitate that connectivity, including potentially a, a bus or, or a shuttle or something? And the fourth, since you said economic development, and the Mayor emphasized enterprise, you know, I spend, I've spent so much of my life over the last 15 years, and I'm doing it again with a youngster, on the I-5 corridor, going to places north and south that have a Delta Park that's fully built out. And because it's, they have a Delta Park fully built out, they have weekend jamborees where people from all over the place come, and it's just a mammoth gathering. And it could be lacrosse, soccer, you name the sport. And what it means is that all the hotels in the area get filled up. And so I hope we're also looking at, since you mentioned PDC and economic development, what's the potential economic impact of fully utilizing Delta Park? And I'm guessing it means filling all the hotels in, in Jansen Beach and in the surrounding area, or maybe leveraging more hotels there. Because the, I can tell you again, as a soccer dad, the ideal situation is to have a world-class venue with a hotel within walking distance. That's heaven. And we are losing so much business to the north, and I can tell you, Southern Washington's all over this, and we have a chance to be best in class. So I hope that's an integral part of what you're looking at. Thank you.
Good points. Other questions? Great. Thank you both very much. Anyone want to speak on this item? Then let's take a roll call vote, please.
Fish?
I enthusiastically support this study and am grateful that Commissioner Fritz is leading this effort. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Just as Parks, Parks programming is more than fun and games, Parks Facilities is an economic asset which we need to make sure of how to make maximum use to benefit the taxpayers. Thank you for your work. Aye.
Hales?
I agree with that statement, but I also, of course, and I think we all do, agree with the need to balance that need for revenue against all those other considerations, and that's why I brought up the, the groups. The four of us who've had the chance to be Parks Commissioner all have Parks stories, but one of my favorites is that when we put together the 1994 Parks Bond Measure, it included some funds for the creation of that softball complex. But meanwhile, some years before, the Softball Association had partnered with Commissioner Lindberg to fund that complex in the levy that was shut down by Measure 5. So they had their hopes up, and then they had their hopes dashed. And I'm, I'm struggling to remember his name because it was 20 years ago. Kerry Thorpe was the, was the president of the Portland Softball Association, and he'd gotten a, an amendment to their bylaws passed after the collapse of the earlier levy strategy that every softball player in Portland would pay a $15 surcharge, and it would go into a fund to help pay for this complex. This had been in place for like seven or eight years. And he also inserted a provision in their bylaws that that bylaws provision could only be changed by a unanimous vote of the Softball Association Board. And then he stood on the board to keep an eye on the growing pot of money. And by the time the '94 bond measure came along, it had grown to half a million dollars. So that's why we built a million-dollar softball complex at Delta Park. So some of these partners literally have a lot of investment in these facilities, and it's important to check in with them, too. Good luck. Look forward to seeing the results. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. 699.
Authorize Portland Parks and Recreation to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Portland Development Commission to fund the Charles Jordan Community Center Roof Repair Project.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is to approve the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement with the Portland Development Commission. Mayor, thank you very much to you and your staff for making this get done quickly. The Charles Jordan Community Center is a popular venue typically hosting 50 to 60 events per year. It's one of the few centers to offer five-day-per-week drop-in activities, and the gym roof has been leaking for the past two years, creating safety concerns and impacting programming. We need to replace the roof in order to continue the excellent programming at this facility. It has the, the project has the added benefit of improving worker safety through insulation of roof safety anchors and ladder across the roof, consistent with OSHA standards. Construction is beginning, scheduled to begin July 1st, so that's why it's an emergency ordinance with an anticipated completion date of later this fall. Introducing Kia Selly, the Parks Planning, Development, and Asset Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here today to request City Council approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Portland Parks and Recreation and the Portland Development Commission for the repair of the Charles Jordan Community Center roof in the amount of $603,000. Located within the Interstate Corridor Urban Renewal Area, the Charles Jordan Community Center is a hub of activity in our community, as Commissioner Fritz described. I would just add that on a daily basis, I have, I have witnessed that it provides not only a place for children to play, but also a place for a lot of kids to do homework in a very safe environment. The roof over the gym has been leaking for two years, and this has really impacted community programming. So we conducted recently a third-party review of the roof by professional roof consultants. They recommended that we replace the roof and provided a few options, and we have now, of course, made the decision to replace the roof based upon their expertise. The design has been completed, and the project has already been bid for construction. The successful bidder is Interstate Sheet Metal, Inc. And with approval of this intergovernmental agreement, we're actually going to start work next week, as Commissioner Fritz described, and we are thankful that it's particularly dry right now and warm. It's perfect weather for roofing. Just a note, you probably already know this, but the Portland Development Commission, their board actually approved the IGA yesterday with an eighth amendment, the Interstate Urban Renewal Area, to allow for investment in a public building. So this is the next step in our process. And thank you. I, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kia. Questions? Anyone want to speak on this item?
I would expect that community members would want to know if this is going to affect any of the programming. Will the center have to be closed as part of the repairs?
The gym will need to be closed during repairs. That's correct. So for most of the summer, the gym will be closed, but it will be reopened in the fall for community programming. This is actually a kind of low season for the gym right now, so this is the perfect time, both from a weather perspective and from a community programming perspective, for us to do the work, so. But there will be some, some customer impacts.
Meanwhile, those kids can go cool off in the Dishman Pool, assuming we can get them there.
Right.
Thank you.
They can actually cool off in the park adjacent to Charles Jordan, too.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much. Anyone want to speak on this item? Roll call then, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thanks to Kia and the Parks Team. Aye.
Hales?
Very much so, and appreciate the Portland Development Commission being a partner to the Parks Bureau, as they should, and also that this is another example of their commitment to equity, so I appreciate Patrick Quentin's cooperative creativity. Aye. 700.
Amend Portland Parks and Recreation's Smoke and Tobacco-Free Parks Policy Enforcement Strategy.
Second reading, roll call.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
The Smoky Man starts in Portland Parks on July 1, and I very much appreciate everybody's support of this amendment to make the enforcement more reasonable. Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Thank you. We're adjourned. Were you inhaling something?